Okay, it's about five o'clock. We're going to begin the Iowa City City Council's work session for Tuesday, August 20th of 2019. The first topic is a discussion of preliminary budget priorities for fiscal year 2021. We received a lengthy memo from our city manager, Jeff Ruin, and I've asked Jeff to summarize that memo. Start there.
Okay. Hard to believe we're talking about budget already, but we are ready to kick it off with staff. You can see the excitement on the faces in the audience tonight, talking budget in August. But we do like to check in with you at this time and just make sure that we have a good read on your priorities going into the budget year that will start on July 1st of 2020. So with tonight's discussion, I'm not really looking for a specific direction from you on any particular item. It's really too early to ask you to say, yes, we want to do this absolutely, or put the tax rate at this level. We don't have enough information at a staff level to kind of have that discussion with you, but we have enough, and you saw that in the memo, to where I think you can give us some general guidance, and then we'll use that throughout the process, come back to you in January, and then start that more detailed review. So my memo contains a few different sections. I'll start with the budget climate. We've talked at length in these sessions before about the property tax reform legislation from 2013. That's put some pressure on our budget, and we'll continue to do so until 2024, when that is fully phased in. We have been fortunate enough to have great growth in the community since 2003, and to generalize, I think we've largely offset the losses that we've experienced from the property tax reform to date. Again, we've still got a few years left to navigate. But one thing we haven't been able to do is really grow our operations in line with the community growth that we've had, and we're starting to see that stress manifest in, excuse me, several of our departments. So again, we've been able to stay afloat through property tax reform, but we haven't necessarily been able to grow to meet the demands of our growing population. This year, in March, the Iowa City Assessors Office mailed property assessments out, and you all probably got a few emails or phone calls or had conversations about those. I won't go into the assessment process tonight, but the average residential property in Iowa City is seeing a nine and a quarter percent increase in their property value. Commercial's up to 10.72, and the multi-residential is up 16. Those assessments will be factored into the tax rate that we set for this upcoming budget. So that tax rate that starts on July 1st of 2020, that you'll set in March when you adopt the budget, that will be factored into those assessments. So you need to think about that as you decide where you want that to be. Our strategic plan continues to have a bullet point expressing a desire to reduce that property tax levy, and we do believe that we will be able to do so through the debt service levy again this year. Again, over the last several years, we've reduced primarily through the debt service levy, and that looks to be the case again this year. The rest of the memo details some new expenses on the horizon that need to be considered. Some of them we've talked about, others that we haven't. For the personnel-related costs, we started the budget on a sour note. We had a higher-than-anticipated health insurance renewal. So after the budget was adopted, we got our renewal numbers, and they were 11% higher than we thought they were going to be in the budget. We had a pretty poor claim experience in the second half of last year. That led to $875,000 of unplanned expenses in the budget, and over $500,000 of those would be directly in the general fund. So that was tough, but that's, you know, we planned for that volatility to be able to absorb that in a year, but we've got to make up that number, right? The health insurance premiums aren't going to come back down, so we've got to make up that 11% and then set it at whatever that new percent, another percentage growth going forward. Council's talked about minimum wage, and the next step in our minimum wage increase would be from 1150, where it is currently, to 1325, and we estimate that to be an expense to the budget of about $350,000, 300 of which would be in the general fund. And then we have another item to talk about later this evening, which is the conversion of hourly employees to permanent employees, and there's a long memo in your packet with that analysis, but at a maximum, that could cost up to $865,000 per year for the nine new positions that we're looking at. So a lot of personnel-related expenses that we need to get into tonight, and at least get your initial read on that. Some other priorities that have come up through the year that could be large dollar numbers that we need to focus on would be the aid to agencies program. You doubled that budget this year. Staff needs a little bit of direction. Are we going to go back to a slightly higher amount than we had in previous years and kind of do an inflationary adjustment there? Or are you looking to do a more significant bump to that program? Affordable housing. You know that we've used one-time dollars to get up to $1 million in the last two years. Right now, our budget has built in about $650,000 for affordable housing, so again, getting a little read from you where you want to be there. The other ones noted, the St. Say Gilmore House. We don't know when demolition will come calling for that house. We want to know how prepared you want to be for that, if we want to budget the full amount, or if and when that time comes, if we want to look to reserves for a solution there, if indeed the council wants to preserve that house. The Climate Action Plan, it's been something that has been on your agendas as of late, and with the call for accelerated implementation of that plan, we're going to need some funds to do that, whether that's for additional staff or for incentive programs to improve the performance of our existing building stock. So that's on the horizon, as is our transit service enhancements. Again, some big-ticket items. We expect to come out of the transit study, whether it's Sunday service or evening service, zero fare service. Those will all cost considerable amount of money, perhaps more than what our transit levy itself can pay for, probably more than what our transit service levy can pay for. So we're going to be looking at general fund and other sources of funds to provide those enhanced level of services. And then I skipped over quickly the Recreation Facility Master Plan. This is a recommendation from your Parks Commission. We're probably looking at a cost of $125,000 to $150,000. This would be a master plan, very similar to the Parks Master Plan we completed three or four years ago. It just focuses on facilities. When we did the Parks Master Plan a few years ago, it was just on the outdoor park areas. It didn't include our rec centers, our athletic fields, or our swimming pools. And so we'd like to do that. All of those facilities that I just mentioned are aging and are in need of some investment over the next decade, and we'd like to have a plan moving forward on how to tackle those. The last part of my memo on the expense side is the core service needs. As I mentioned in there, just about every department can articulate the need for increased staffing. I highlighted a few that I think are most pressing in the organization and I think you need to give serious consideration, and I know we will be given serious consideration to trying to supplement staffing in a few of those areas as budget dollars allow for. We can get into that in more detail if you want tonight. And then on the capital side, again, we've been focusing on the operating so far. Capital, the council has expressed a desire to be more aggressive with street repairs, so we'll need to work through that. We had a pretty good discussion in January about city facilities, and we were thankful that you all not only provided funding for the public works streets facility, but also began a facility reserve fund and contributed $2 million to that. Those were two major steps forward, and we'd like to continue that going forward with another contribution to that facility reserve fund and some additional studies and land acquisitions that we feel will be needed going forward. The last capital item of note, again, comes from your Parks Commission, and it's the unfunded status of two major master plans that we've done in the last five or six years. That would be the City Park Master Plan and the Eastside Sports Complex Master Plan. Again, both those projects are unfunded, but there's a desire from the Parks Commission to see those go forward. Last part of the memo is the alternative revenues. I put this in the memo not only because we might need it to fund some of these initiatives if we decide to move forward with them, but also it's been on your pending list for a better part of a year, so I wanted to just give you some basic information on a couple of those alternative revenue sources. And those were increased property taxes, whether we want to tap into, say, the emergency levy, which could generate upwards of $1 million a year. The utility tax, a reminder, you're at 1% on your utility tax, and state law allows you to go up to 5%. A 1% increase is about a $900,000 bump there. And then local option sales tax, the other one I mentioned there. So that's a brief overview of the memo, and I'm just really hoping to, we'll answer questions, but really just listen to a discussion of the council and where your priorities are, and that will help us tremendously as we get started with the budget.
Great, thanks, Jeff. So you had your memo with five questions for us. It seems to me we could walk our way through each of those questions in sequence and go into the subcategories for each of those questions, see how people respond, with all of us understanding that we're not going to be able to come up with any definitive, firm answer to questions because this is a big, complicated topic with a lot of moving parts. Does that sound reasonable to you all to go through those five questions?
Yep.
Okay, so the first one is, is reducing the city's tax rate, especially considering recent property assessments, still a priority for the city council? Do you have any general goals for the overall tax rate? So I think I'll just start things off with regard to that. I think it is politically wise for us to reduce, I guess, the debt service levy in order to soften the blow of a very large increase in property assessed value on various properties, like the 16% for multifamily units and 9-plus percent for single-family and so on. I don't think we should be overly ambitious in terms of the magnitude of that kind of reduction, but I do think we should reduce it somewhat. So I don't know what the rest of you all think, so please feel free to weigh in.
I would agree with that. When you're looking at 16% with the multi-residential and it's $1,211 a year, that can be pretty significant for a family. So if we were to, you know, bring that down by using the debt service levy, that would be helpful.
I would agree. I think, and not for any political reasons, I just think compassion for the people in the city that are paying property taxes and who pay property taxes through their rent or directly, you know, as property owners. When you look at those percentage increases, those are pretty darn big, and we don't, at this point, at least I don't have any idea what the county and the school district are going to do, and we have to recall that ours is only about 40%, 41% of that total tax levy. So I think we need to look at trying to decrease it, and again, I don't have any idea how much at this point because I don't have any concept of how much the increase in valuations, you know, is going to impact us dollar-wise, but I think we need to have some decrease.
Jeff, I think one thing I'd like clarification on, because I think this is something that's often misunderstood in the public at large, is we have reduced in the past the debt service levy over the last several years. We've obviously received some compliments about that. Some people haven't noticed it because of the increase in the valuations, and others have said, you know, what are you doing? We have a lot of needs. If you could just super briefly explain the relationship between reducing the debt service levy and our ability to have operational revenue for things like library, these sorts of things, because I think a lot of times that's misunderstood. It's my understanding that is only for purposes of servicing the debt obligations of the city. And the second related question to that is, is that if we did not reduce it, would we be able to reduce the debt that the city has even more quickly? So those would be the two questions.
Yeah, I'm going to ask Dennis to come up and help with that.
Yes.
Sure, I'll try and answer all that for you. I mean, the debt service levy is specifically meant to reduce debt or pay off debt. Now, that levy is a factor of the amount of debt that's coming due at a particular time. So even if you did not reduce that rate and kept it higher, unless that debt was callable, you wouldn't necessarily be allowed or be able to pay it off faster. So you have to look at your debt schedule, which is a long-term schedule, and that rate is kind of based on your annual needs. And so, you know, as that annual need becomes due, you know, you're going to set that rate based on what that annual need is. And if you have more than that, it doesn't necessarily mean that you can pay it off any faster. And, you know, when, if you look at the city's overall property tax rate, it is a culmination of a number of different levies. Some are voted in, some are very specific, like they're for employee benefits, or they're for transit, or library, and so they're very specific, and the debt service levy is specific to repaying that debt. Most of the operating is funded through the general fund levy, which is limited to $8.10. And that's why frequently, when you look at that, what it costs to pay for those operations, those limitations and restrictions that are placed on those operating levies, we've hit those caps, like transit at 95 cents is capped, libraries at 27 cents is capped. And so whatever the growth factors in the property tax valuations is essentially what we're limited to that growth, whereas the debt service levy is more of a factor of our overall debt structure and debt plan.
Okay. So reducing that, then, does not necessarily impair our general fund operating revenue?
No.
Okay. So I just wanted to make that point, because I think that's, as we have this discussion, we're not necessarily addressing our ability to meet our residents' needs. Those are other revenue sources. And so with that, with those two questions answered, thank you very much, Dennis, I do think it makes a lot of sense to, you know, reduce the tax burden for some of our property owners as well as our renters, and, you know, while still being able to meet the needs as well as the debt service obligations.
I personally think our goal as a council is not, we did not come here to reduce the tax levy or the debt service levy. We are here to see what the need of the community. And last year, we used, we reduced the debt levy, and we used like $500,000 to buy, I guess hopefully I'm doing the number right, to buy a new land for the gas station, for the fire station. And I think if we borrowed our money and we left the debt service levy as it is, I mean, like, we did not reduce it, we did not increase it, leave it as it is, and instead of use cash money, we will use from the general fund, we will use our money to do something else. And also, if we can reduce it, it's really ideal and good, and in the same time, we meet the community needs. That's regarding the debt service levy. Last year, also, we reduced the employee benefit levy. Why should we do that? At the same time, we have employee that they don't have benefit, and they work with the city for years. And I know that most of the money that paid for the employee benefit, now we're going to come to that later, but the figure that we have $800,000, it is scary, but does not, the whole amount is not coming from the general fund. This will be employee benefit levy and general fund for salary. I guess, you know, I believe if we can reduce taxes is great, as long as we're meeting all the community needs. But we cannot, as a city, hire employees for years without benefit, without health insurance, and reduce, you know, the employee benefit levy. For me, I will look at it at like, what we need, and if we need to increase it, we increase it. If we wanted to leave it alone as it is, we will, and if we want to decrease it, we will. But we have to look at the needs of the community.
John, Pauline?
Yeah, I would support looking at the debt, reducing the debt levy, and I would echo, I think, some of Mazza here's comments in that. My main concern is that, however we approach our tax situation, shall we say, that we justify it, that we have a strong argument, a clear argument in terms of however we set the tax rates or make decisions regarding, you know, what kind of revenue we need in order to sustain Iowa City, that it's well documented and justified. You know, when I live in a place or decide to move to a place, the first thing I look at isn't what the tax rate is. It's really what's the quality of life? Is it a place whose values and so forth I can support and reflect the way I would like to lead my life? That's really where I'm focused. But of course, all things being equal, yes, if we can reduce taxes, sure. But I think we need to balance it with what our goals are as a community.
So I think we have to be clear on what the community would like us to do on this and have a clear understanding, if they have a clear understanding of the decision we make. I agree, possibly reducing the debt service levy would be one way to go about this. Reducing the taxes, from the data we've had, I don't think our taxes are very high. I have a friend that lives in, of course, it's the Chicago area, but her taxes are phenomenal. Ours look pretty good compared to that, but I know this is a different city, but I think whatever we can do, as Mazza here said, to help the members of our community and our employees, would be the best way to go.
Jeff, how much did the assessments go up by category? I don't remember from your memo.
It was nine and a quarter for residential.
Nine and a quarter what?
For residential properties.
Percent?
Yes. 10.72% for commercial and 16% for multi-residential.
Okay, so the 16% surely would be passed along to renters?
Presumably.
Yeah, so that's certainly one thing on my mind, because we are, have displayed serious concern for the affordability of housing, especially for renters, especially for renters who are low to moderate income. So if we jack up the taxes too much, that'll get passed along to them and then worsen the affordability problem. So this is a complicated thing. I'm not trying to oversimplify it, but that's part of my thinking. Okay, let's move on to the second question.
We have a council.
So the second question is, which of the new expense items are of the highest priority to the council? Are there any that would not be considered a high priority? So please feel free to weigh in.
And by expense, we would also include the minimum wage increase as well as the employee benefits?
Yes.
Well, yeah, Jeff's memo identifies, I don't know, 10 or more items.
So at least in terms of my own priorities, we'll see where everyone else is going. I think the minimum wage increase is absolutely critical. We've made a, I think, a sensible gradual transition to get up to that $15 an hour. I think we should stay at that level. Two, maybe this would be for the other memo, but I think the employee benefits issue is important. And then once we get to the capital, I'll have some feedback on the capital expenses, but those would be the two big things for me. And then finally, I do think in terms of our expenses, we really need to focus in on significant investments in our climate change program. Leave it to staff's discretion in terms of how that manifests itself, you know, whether it's assistant to residents in terms of, you know, converting to more renewable energy and infrastructure, but I think those are the sort of things that, so we can give staff that direction in terms of in the particular, in general, and then staff can come back to the next council with particulars on those. But those would be the three for me.
Just a quick question. So when you say employee benefits, you're talking about the conversion of hourly employees to permanent?
Yes, yes.
Want to clarify?
Well, I would say some of my priorities would be climate, transit improvements, affordable housing, and streets are the four that I would highlight. I hope too, as we proceed on this, that there's some interrelationship between these things. In other words, with respect to affordable housing and transit, that has climate impacts, so these things, you know, to the degree we, in fact, I think this is extremely important in our approach to budgeting is looking for, you know, one thing that will do many things as much as possible. And so the interrelationship of these priorities and goals, I think, is important to consider.
I think when I look at them, to me, we've made a commitment on minimum wage, so I think it is important to continue with the commitment that we've already made in that I would say that we need to figure out that climate action piece. I don't know, again, like you're saying, John, kind of how the staff kind of envision some of that, and I think the transit enhancements, because I think the transit, I think, is one of those things that can have the largest effect on some of our lower and moderate income residents in terms of getting kids to childcare, getting to work, not missing work, those sorts of things. On the affordable housing, I'm comfortable staying at the 650 that staff has budgeted in there. I would like to see us agree to that 125 to 150 for the Recreation Facility Master Plan. You talked, John, when you think about a place to live, you look at what's going on, and I think we're long overdue to really have a full analysis of the recreation facilities and things within this community, you know, looking for the next 10, 20, 30 years and making sure we have those kinds of amenities. So, yeah, I would stay committed to the minimum wage. I think climate action, the transit, and do the recreation study, if I were to do four, would be my priorities.
I don't know that I can really sit and, you know, identify which ones will be priority because I feel like all of them are priority. And to John, you know, when you're talking about, do some of these interchange? Climate, you know, action, you're talking about transit service, you're talking about the St. Gilmore House, you know, the master parks and recs and, I mean, everything here. So I think for me, it's really figuring out how do we look at what the needs are, and then from there, try to determine how we adjust, how we can meet them. For the affordable housing specifically, the one thing that, I know that is $650,000 here has been, you know, the standard budget item, but I believe it's been for the past three years, we've done a million dollars. Two, two, two years, for the past two years, we've done a million dollars. When looking at the Johns County Housing Trust Fund, so they use a revolving loan for some of the funds, and if not all of the funds, that are given back, that are, that the city gives. So those funds, so what is $1,000 today, you know, that is given to the Johns County Housing Trust Fund, it actually still becomes $1,000 10 years from now because people pay it back. So for, so that one there, it really is increasing, you know, if we give a million, you know, every year, you know, into that fund, not to say that that's where all of our million go, but that is really building up our capacity to meet the affordable housing needs in our community. I mean, I can talk about that a little more. One thing that I will say is that when Tracy Heishu gave her update on some of the things that they want to do with affordable housing, and just looking at existing properties and stuff like that, I think there's a lot of opportunity, especially since we are seeing an increase in vacancy rates. I think we can, you know, look at what opportunities would be there for individuals that need housing. Also, when I look at, you know, aid to agency, and, you know, it's very clear that there are some agencies within our agency, within our area, that are helping the most needy. And so I think that's where our community wants to put the money. The heart of our community really is to ensure that we all move higher and together, and so I don't know that I can, you know, just identify any of these as being, you know, very important when we're talking about minimum wage. I agree with Susan. We've made this commitment. I agree with Susan, we've made this commitment, we're going to stick to it. The conversion of the hourly employees to permanent, we're going to talk about that a little later. So I think all of them are, you know, priorities for me.
I agree with Bruce, it is hard to narrow it down. For me, looking at all of the topics, they all seem to relate to staffing needs. I've been hearing from a lot of the departments and employees in various departments that they just don't have enough staff and, and looking at their departments, some of their staffing needs may have been established many, many years ago and our, our city has grown phenomenally, and so those needs have grown. So I think the salaries for those employees or even asking each of the departments to give us analysis, analysis of their needs, what, what they feel they, they need as far as staffing, how we could approve that. But staffing also does relate to even the transit study, I'm going to be anxious to see how that comes out and, and what they say we might need for staffing, but I guess we wouldn't have to specifically say salaries for transit, it would just be salaries in general out of the, out of the fund for salaries, but that could be a significant amount. The climate, as somebody had mentioned, obviously it's been requested that we have a coordinator position that probably won't come at a low cost. Affordable housing, as Bruce had mentioned, that also maybe might take some increased staffing in Tracy's department to help with finding the housing and upgrading some of the houses that are out there. So those are the kinds of things that I think are going to be priorities.
Okay. I, I just think like the minimum wage base in here, as Susan said, that's something we committed and Bruce Okoa, I guess this is even, shouldn't be there because this is a commitment and we said three years increase and it's supposed to be good to go. But for me, the priority will be affordable housing, keep the 1 million and if we can add to it, it will be great, but keep the 1 million. And the second thing will be, of course, conversion of our employee to permanent, that definitely my second choice. My third will be, you know, the transit. My fourth will be the climate action plan. I like recreation center, but I need to see people living in houses before they can go on bark and wreck. And, but those are my priority.
This is a tough question to answer because we don't really know what the total amount of money is that we're going to have and there, and we don't know how much all these things add up to, so that, we'll get to that discussion once we get a draft budget from Jeff. So let me run through some things, express my views. So we have to increase, we have to include the increased health insurance costs, that's a given. Like Maz said, we're committed to increasing the minimum wage to 1325 beginning in the middle of 2020, so I take that to be a given. Converting nine more hourly positions to permanent status, that's something we're going to discuss more thoroughly in, in a few minutes. I would much rather add needed new permanent staff than spend money converting nine positions to, you know, permanent staff positions. I am open to the possibility of converting a few positions, but not all nine of them. I think the city's contribution to aid to agency should be brought down from what we brought it up to last meeting, but it can be a little higher than what it currently is, or what it was planned for last fiscal year. Affordable housing is a higher, a high priority for me, and I prefer to see a million dollars go into it instead of 650, 650,000. Historic preservation is also a very high priority for me, as I think I've made very clear, but I don't think the St. Say Gilmore, moving the St. Say Gilmore House is worth anywhere from 600,000 to 1.2 million dollars, plus the lost cost or value of the parking lot that it would be moved into. So I'm really very troubled by that and I've been hopeful we'll be able to work out an arrangement with the president, so, of the university, so that we don't have to make that troubling choice. I think we should put money in the budget for the recreation facilities master plan, it's good to think ahead. Climate crisis, I think we're going to have to find a new revenue source for it. I had originally been thinking we'd probably have to go to the public with a referendum and in many ways that would be a very good thing to do because then we'd see whether the public is fully on board with what we have done in declaring a climate crisis or not. But there are alternative sources of funding that we can draw upon, which Jeff mentions in his memo, so maybe they would be sufficient for what we need to do. And let's see, yep, we will need new funds for major transit improvements and that's a big deal with regard to affordability for people getting around town also. Likewise, with regard to the climate action thing, I see a strong, I don't know, synthesis of interest in affordability of housing with climate action when you can use funds to reduce utility costs. So I'm hopeful about that. So that's pretty much what I wanted to say. I don't, are there any points of conflict that, that's a good thing, having conflict, are any points of conflict that we really should kind of draw, dive into a little bit farther?
I'm glad you'd mentioned that, Jim, I was going to say, cut me off if we don't have enough time for a conversation, but very briefly, I agree with you on this St. Say Gilmore House. I think the community is really going to have to make a tough decision on this. We all love that structure, but 600,000, at least for me, to a million is way too much. But again, we don't want to rule that out, we want to keep all options open. Briefly related to aid to agencies, we don't need to pick the final number now, I think the number should go down from where we were last year, but I do think that we need to incorporate both the increased population of the city of Iowa City, that that should be reflected in staff's proposal, as well as the, you know, we do have more populations with needs and so there has to be an assessment of demographics as well to figure out whether there are greater needs. We've had some, you know, refugee populations that need some additional help and that's okay, I embrace that. I think that's something though that, that needs to be reflected in those numbers, and I think my key point is, is that can't be flat because that was the whole problem when we had that discussion. We'll leave it to staff's discretion in terms of where we should go. Finally, related to the revenues, I do think that the community, this will likely be a task for the next council, really needs to think hard and seriously about the local option sales tax. And then the other thing related to emergency levy, I don't like to use the emergency levy, but part of me thinks that while times are relatively good, we may need to tap into this sort of as a way of preparing for times that may be bad, as opposed to waiting until times are bad to do the emergency. So something to think about as far as that goes.
So Rockney, on those points, I mean, they're all good ones, but the last couple especially, but they're actually addressed under question five, so we're going to get to that.
Yeah, so as I said, cut me off beyond the scope.
I would just make an additional comment, you know, I think as a lot of us were going through this and maybe Jim is the only one that kind of went down past the, the significant new expenses in terms of priorities, but I would totally agree with you, Jim, that, and I've mentioned this, I think, in other meetings too, that we really need to look at our core service needs and staffing and certainly look at what the city manager is looking at and recommending in terms of some of those core needs where we need to increase staff levels. Because I think with the, with our strategic plan and the growth and a lot of the things that we've been doing, as we've talked about, there's, there's a real stress level on our staff in terms of the demands being put on them and not having grown the staff over the last few years. So I would agree with you, Jim. I think it's essential for the benefit of the whole city and, and the well, health of our staff as well, that we look at some increases in those core staff positions more than converting some of the hourly positions.
So we'll probe that a little more with question three.
Yeah.
Jim, you did get into more detail.
Sorry, Maz was.
I just have like comment that I want to add from what just Rockney said, like by looking at the community and see the needs, and you see all the time, like for the, you know, the, the, the agency budget, I understand that we don't have to double it like last time, but at least we, we have to look at the needs because, look at the community, see like what is new in the community, what greater needs in the community, because even this report, this memo, when I look at it, I just find out that, you know, I don't know, but it's not highlighting the social justice spending that is very good to the community. It is, and it, we, we done a lot good thing for the, for social justice spending and I need to see this reflecting here. I know that fire, police department, all those basic need is, are important, but also we have to just say that there is many, many other basic need that I think it is really, you know, not being recognized in this as, like making our community better. And we've been doing that, but I need to see that here.
I agreed with much of what you said, Jim, I just would, would want to comment briefly on, on St. Say Gilmore. I think we really need to maintain that dialogue with the university. I feel it was their actions that kind of put the city into a very difficult situation.
Actually Gloria Day.
Okay, Gloria Day. But we kind of inherited a situation and I'm hoping we can, with some collaboration, work our way out of it. And then on the aid to agencies, I, you know, I hope now that, you know, the agencies have been, I think, a little more forthright in what they feel their needs are, that the community will respond to that in, you know, in their contributions. But I would be concerned if, you know, they come back and it's, it's higher than we budgeted. I would be very receptive to, you know, providing those funds. I felt they were, you know, they've done excellent work and they're a safety net that I do not want to sever in terms of, you know, our community need situation.
Okay, so maybe can turn to question number three, which is?
I guess Austin want to say something.
Oh, sure. Oh, Austin, sorry.
Yeah, just, I would wholeheartedly agree with Counselor Thomas in regards to the St. Say Gilmore House, and I do have a point of clarification on it. Where is the proposed parking lot?
Right across the street.
Okay, thank you.
Right across Market Street, that is. It's a city-owned parking lot.
Go ahead.
Okay, question three, is supplementing staffing in existing departments a high priority? Are there certain operations that you would like to see expand service levels?
I would say for me, yes, that's a very high priority and I would leave it to the city manager's office and consultant with the department heads to where that, where that highest priority is. I don't think at our level at city council, we necessarily have enough of the inside vision and scoop of really what the workload is and, and how that staff is working to make that particular determination of one department over the other. But I think given frequent and ongoing communication of the workload and the stress level within our service staff, I definitely think those, increasing that staffing is necessary.
I would agree. I would say I have a little bit of personal experience with parks and recreation and do feel that, you know, given the, the degree to which that department is, the, the assets, the, the properties that are under our control now that have been added to the system, it, you know, how we could possibly manage a larger system with the same level of staff is, doesn't make any sense whatsoever. So I'm, I'm sensitive to parks and recreation. Susan, I agree with you that on some of these other departments, I would leave it to the, the staff and the city manager's office. I, I am interested in how we can, through permits and fees, provide revenues to fund those additional staff. You know, transportation services is a enterprise fund, if I'm not mistaken, so we could look into, you know, our parking fees, how to adjust to accommodate for additional staffing. I've mentioned on numerous occasions the idea of a neighborhood parking benefit program, which I hope was also mentioned in a recent report we received on artificial intelligence. I think there's potential for that to generate revenue, which could also help address the, the operational needs as well as, from a climate standpoint, you know, get, address the fact that free parking has a, a climate cost. So, so those are my thoughts on the staffing.
I, I just think if there is a department that's shorting staff and they need new staff, definitely they have to have more people. We don't want to have like a lot of workload for the people that sometime created stressful environment. But if some of those, like my understanding that, I know that there is a position, long time ago at the park, at the recreation center here, it used to be a full-time position where they converted to seasonal position. And now I hear some people saying that, I rather hire new person than like converting those position to, you know, to, to, to like full-time. But if we did that as a city, it used to be like a permanent position, we take it away, hire to seasonal, we better convert those to seasonal to permanent position at that. I know that there is a recommendation, we're going to talk about it later, but unless if we can use the seasonal positions or the, yeah, and convert them to a position that the city needs, would be great, we have to start with that first. And after that, if we see like assorted, assorted in any position somewhere else and need to be covered, we have to. But I really, and at the same time, even though after we fill all our position and we, we still need to convert those position, the people who, we misclassify them as a seasonal and they work around the year. I want to work on both. If the, if the department needed a new person to be hired because there is no seasonal person there work around the year, we can look into that, but in the same time, we have to convert those people, that, what I think.
I think I jumped the gun a little bit on the, on the first question because I touched on the staffing, because I, I think that is an important need. As I mentioned, I've been hearing from a lot of the departments that they're just short staff, that's kind of antiquated staffing model that they are using now and just can't meet the community service needs that we have. And just looking at our seven goals, our strategic plan, we've been told many times that we have a rather aggressive strategic plan and goals and the departments need the staffing to be able to, to meet those goals that we've set. But what I would like to see then from the departments is, is an analysis of, of what they feel their needs are.
I know we only have so much money at the end of the day that we're, we're going to have to look at. So for me, when we're talking about, you know, staffing, I also have to put in there, you know, currently what we're talking about is the conversion of hourly employees, employees to permanent. And I would have, I, I don't think that we can look at those separately to a certain degree. When we're talking about we have needs and, you know, the conversion where potentially some of the, some of the positions can remain where they are currently, I do believe that there is a place, and I know we're going to be getting into that later in, in discussion today, I do believe that there is a place for hourly employees as well as permanent and, you know, how do you figure that out? So for me, I really do believe that staffing needs, you know, you know, hourly employees to permanent is one big discussion. And I feel like that, you know, that goes with ass me and the city staff coming together to figure that out and balance it. Unfortunately, you know, we're going to be talking about the hourly employees to permanent here in a little bit, and maybe that in hindsight, you know, it, it should have been a broader question that maybe city and staff, well, ass me and the city could have been working on.
So for me, you know, Susan's right, we don't want to get too much into the details, but that said, I do want to give enough detail that the staff can get our feedback. And, you know, for me, I actually have a real concern about some of the trends we're seeing in violent crime in the community. We've seen a lot of stuff in the media over the last three to four months. Each time one of those events happen, you know, the question is, are we sort of overreacting to the most recent media report? It's very easy to do that as a human being. We need to sort of balance that with what the data tells us. Fortunately, we are going into more data-driven direction in terms of making sure we have that empirical evidence as well, but however staff determines it's necessary to meet that particular issue, whether it's funding in other areas, whether it's addition for additional law enforcement officers, I, I would be supportive of that because I, I've just noticed it, I've been concerned about it, and I think it's something that we need to at least do everything we can to ensure that the community remains the, the community that we have. Related to that topic, I also think we need to ensure that we're Related to that topic, I also think we need to ensure that we're continuing to do everything we have, if there is a budget limitation, to ensure that we have adequate funding to increase the diversity of our law enforcement. I think that's incredibly important. And I'm hoping that that can continue to be a topic. Obviously, there are some challenges with that in terms of ensuring that that happens. But I just believe that that's an absolutely critical component of, that we need to address as far as that goes. And in terms of the overall funding, I, I think that that's something that, you know, in terms of the individual needs, you know, we're just going to have to continue to monitor that very closely and, you know, continue to get the feedback from the community as a whole. But those were some of the concerns that I had had.
Have all of you spoken now? Yeah. Okay, well, Jeff, your memo identifies eight and a half specific positions that could be added to police, the neighborhood development services department and transportation services, plus others that you don't quantify, but you just kind of refer to others that could be helpful in other departments. So it's pretty hard to sort that through without having some sense of how many employees and what's the cost would be and so on. In terms of values, if data reveals that in fact there have been trend, there has been a significant trend toward a more serious incidence of crime, I would be eager to deal with that by hiring additional staff in the police department. I haven't seen that data. I mean, I'm certainly aware of reports of things that have happened and they are very troublesome, but in terms of data, I haven't seen it. So anyhow, there's that. But for other reasons, I, I think we do need additional staff and then NDS, Neighborhood Development Services. I think we need additional parking enforcement person. I think we need another person in the forestry department. But this really is managerial stuff in terms of values, you know, I think.
Yeah, I'm not really looking for, you need, you know, two new employees here or there. I want you to think more on the service level. So for instance, if you, if you felt really strongly about the climate plan, and I know you do, and you said, we need to double our tree planting in the next three years, that's going to have staffing implications.
And that's why I mentioned forestry.
Right. So that's the, that's the level of discussion that, you know, a comment like concerns over the violent crime, that's, that's, that's what we're looking for here, not necessarily. I don't expect you to be able to drill down and say that's going to result in three positions.
On a related point, Pauline rightly mentioned concerns about the cost of hiring a new person to do the other climate work that we will talk about later on in this meeting. But it's my understanding that that staff person, we can fund that staff person using funds you've already set aside for what was originally planned to be a different kind of work. So that in itself, I don't think is a problem. There's some elements in your memo, Jeff, that have to do with capital improvements, but you didn't really ask us to focus a question on them. For example, well, I guess I can.
Yeah, the roads and city facilities and park master plans.
I guess we can come to roads with regard to the, what is it, the last question, number five, about new revenue sources? But I'll just jump to that. So I definitely think we need to be spending some money on, more money on improving the conditions of our roads, and that probably needs a new revenue source. I don't know what the rest of you think about that, but it seems to me pretty darn clear.
Yes.
Yes, I agree.
I agree.
And let's see, with regard to city park and east side sports complex, I know there's considerable interest in that. I understand that there are a variety of organizations and interests promoting both of them. With regard to the east side sports complex, I personally think that we need to be thinking about climate action when we review that particular project. And we don't need to talk about that in detail right now, but it seems to me we will need to do that, because we'll need to do that for a lot of things with regard to climate action. Okay, you want to move on to question number four? Or, you know, anybody want to follow up on anything else before we do that? Okay, so question number four is pretty easy. Are there, not, I mean, I mean easy, simple question, hard to answer. Are there items not discussed in the memo that the council would like staff to explore? I'm wondering, Susan, if there's anything about operational expenses having to do with the access center that need to be discussed? And then I'm also wondering about this childcare initiative that's emerging from the chamber and others, and whether there might be any operational expenses associated with that.
In terms of the access center, the commitment at this point from the city has been simply to capital costs of 2.5 million. And we are still working through the 28E agreements that will, you know, be in place. And I know Eleanor and others have gotten some, some of that started, and I'm going to be talking with her tomorrow. The county has committed that they are covering operational costs. I think there's certainly still a lot of unknowns in terms of how much reimbursement they'll get from insurance companies, from Medicaid, et cetera. But at this point, we're not on the hook for any of those operational costs.
Good to know.
So, well, they might try to come back later. I think they're very concerned about the ongoing operational costs, but, you know, we have made absolutely no commitment to that at all.
Did anybody else want to bring up anything else? And Jeff, after we find out, maybe you could respond to the childcare part.
Can we still like, because I know this is not final, right? We can still bring something later when we, yeah.
Yeah.
The only thing I would say, Maza, here, if it's something of a significant dollar amount, what we're trying to do is get that in front of staff now so that they can see if there's support from the majority of council as to whether or not to try and fit it in, into the budget. I think what we're trying to avoid is, I think we had a little bit of this last year and maybe even the year before, if staff gets the budget kind of done and then.
I just mean from now to the next council meeting, I does not, that can be the end of it.
Sure, yeah.
This might be, may be too small ball, Jim, but I, I think that the staff, to the extent that they can, should really look at what we're doing by way of event planning and festivals out more in our neighborhood. We do do party in the parks. A lot of our main events, though, are downtown. Again, maybe a little bit of small ball here, but I do think that's something that staff should continue to evaluate to make sure that the events aren't only happening downtown, but they're also happening in the neighborhoods. That's pretty detailed.
And I agree, Jim, that the childcare aspect needs to be looked at, and I look forward to hearing from Jeff because from what we've seen and heard, childcare needs relates to everything, jobs and housing and transportation, the schools. So it is really important, and I know we in Invest Health, Tracy's not out in the audience now, had, had a wonderful, oh, there she is, yes, she is. We had a plan for childcare facility, but it kind of fell through. We were going to jointly with the county in Kirkwood, and it was wonderful plan. I hope we can still follow through and maybe she can talk to you, and maybe that can be part of this childcare initiative because it's a big need.
One thing I'll just mention, I brought it up, try to expand on it a little bit, you know, with the parking benefit district. I'm really pleased how we are, you know, over the years here now, over the last several years, I think capturing and identifying issues that we need to get a better handle on, whether it's the road conditions, you know, the park master plan, looking at the parks and open spaces, now we'll be looking at the facilities that we missed in that, in that assessment. So we're getting, I think, a much clearer idea of our liabilities, and I'm really pleased with that. We're also with the transportation services question, looking at transit. I would add to that, I would like to have a better understanding of our parking policy. I think, you know, we, we've been pushing the development piece very heavily. I think now we're beginning to understand that there are consequences with respect to mobility once you increase density. And so I'm, I'm really interested in seeing if we can expand the scope of our analysis of our transportation and mobility as we move forward, with parking being a critical piece of that in terms of how, and particularly if we're, if we're looking at climate, how our parking policy will play into that. But I think, I think parking is going to be increasingly an issue as we increase the density in the downtown. And if we do not seriously look at that, I think we could run into some difficulties in terms of congestion and frustration with respect to how to accommodate automobiles.
Any other comments on question number four? We'll move to question number five. Is the council open to alternative sources? If so, which ones and for what possible purposes? I, my preference, and this is not a short-term solution, because this is going to take some time, but of those four alternatives that Jeff has listed there is the local option sales tax. I think when you look at the three first options, the increased property taxes, the utility tax and the user fees, those, in my estimation, put the biggest burden on the low to moderate income members of our community and don't take advantage of all the money that outsiders spend in this city. And so Jeff mentions in the memo, we did a four-year local option sales tax after the 2008 flood, raised $30 million in four years. I mean, that, that's a significant, a significant amount of money. And I know when we were looking at this before, when you start looking at the statistics of who's actually paying that, an awful lot of that is paid by people who are not Iowa City or even Johnson County residents. And I know there's a lot of people who say the local option sales tax is a very regressive tax, but when you look at all of the exclusions under state law, it is not anywhere as near as regressive as I think a lot of people think. Your rent, your medications, you know, so many, your groceries, all those things that are the highest proportion of purchases, particularly for people of low to moderate income, are not even subject to the sales tax. So I think it's, of those three, I think, of those four that are listed, I think it's probably the least regressive, and it takes advantage of all the people who come into this community and spend money, whether they're here for something at Hancher or Kinnick or whatever. And they use our roads, they use our streets, they use our police officers, they might not like it, but.
Involuntarily.
Yeah, involuntarily, maybe. They, yes, they encounter, whatever. I just think it makes sense. That is not a solution for this next budget. It's going to take some time to, you know, make a determination if that's the direction we want to go and ramp up that kind of a, an effort to educate the community as to why we think that makes sense and what, how it can benefit the community. But I think for the long-term financial sustainability of this community, that is probably the best and most impactful thing that we can do in terms of improving our revenue sources.
I would agree, Susan, and I'm so glad that you mentioned what is and is not included in local option sales tax. Because I remember actually when I first ran for council, one of the first questions I got was, were you for a local option sales tax? And it was very experienced Paul, and I said, well, I think I am. And that person responded, no, they're aggressive, they're bad, right? And it hurts the most vulnerable. And I don't think the person really actually thought about what is included and what's, it doesn't cover food, for example, right? So, and there's also, the legislature's thought of this, and they've excluded a lot of those things. And moreover, we don't pay, we pay it, of course, but a lot of out-of-town residents pay it as well. And so why not help the people that are benefiting from those services, whether involuntarily or voluntarily, that they're contributing into the, because I, we really are a statewide city, right? I mean, people come to join the University of Iowa. I do think it's important that we look at that. It is not a simple revenue fix. It's something that does take some planning. But I do think in terms of the optics of it, if we're able to get the support from the adjacent communities, I think now is really a good time to at least start in that conversation. I think we have a lot of potential there because related to the roads, we have to do something about it. And by the way, this is no critique at all on our staff. Our staff have done a terrific job on very limited funding. But we have to give them the funding to be able to do it, and it's not just seasonal. A lot of times you say, oh, well, it's just what it looks like in the spring. If you just go through and look at, you know, you can go two blocks that way, it is, they're not good condition, and it really does reflect. So we need to give them the tools to address that, and with those resources, I'm confident they'll do a fantastic job. Finally, related to the emergency, I'm sure there, there must be statutory requirements in terms of what we have to do to establish an emergency, is that correct, Eleanor? Or can we declare an emergency, or in terms of limitations?
It's pretty liberal. We could use it if we wanted to.
Oh, okay. Well, so I do think we need to think about, you know, if we're talking about, you know, climate change, I think it is, we use the word crisis. I don't think that is too untethered from what we just declared. So if we're serious about that, I think we need to evaluate that. And again, while the times are relatively good as opposed to waiting for that. So I think that's something we have to look at as far as that goes. But those would be my comments on revenue.
I think the biggest point for the local option sales tax, which I didn't realize that Iowa City was the only metro area in the state of Iowa that does not have a lost. And driving through Cedar Rapids, there are signs all along their streets, you're lost dollars at work for, for their streets, and they've tried to maintain their streets. And so as far as the use goes, that would be a prime need for that. So I would be in favor of that as far as, as Susan mentioned, or the utility tax, even a 1% or 2%, even a little bump up in that, people on limited income, seniors, disabled folks, lower income folks, that's a hardship. It's hard to, and then you don't want them trying to determine whether they should pay their taxes or get some food.
I, I think really, for me, definitely the employee benefit levy. I guess when I asked Dennis about last year, if you remember, how much did we reduce it by?
10 cents.
10 cents, and how much that was generating?
That was about, I believe that was $40,000, $400,000. I have to, I think it was $40,000.
I think 1 cent is 50,000 before they.
400,000.
1 cent.
About 400,000.
Yes, it's 400,000, not 40. And I think now we need for the employee benefit levy, for, just to convert those people like around 300 something. And if we left the tax alone last year, we should have not have any of this problem. But definitely because we reduced it last year for nothing, we should have that back. And for the emergency, of course, if we think like, if we declare that we have the, you know, the crisis for the, as Rockney said, we're talking about the environment and the climate action plan that we have, and we said we have crisis, that could be one thing that we can do. And I agree also for the 1% utility tax or 2% maximum for the utility. But definitely the benefit, the employee benefit levy.
The local option, option sales tax, it was interesting that we raised over 30 million. So when I was reading that, I was amazed at the difference between the other options that we had. And so I would agree with the counselors here, that that would be definitely of interest for us to go down. The other ones, when we look at how, how much money it'd generate, I think it's good. But maybe we really look at the local, local option sales tax and see if that really does meet our need. We know it won't meet our need, but if it, if it'd get us down the road a little bit. And I do know last year, or this year, during the budget season, I did learn about the employee tax. And so I would like to, I think that is something worth exploring and having discussion about as well.
I think the thing to keep in mind when you're talking about that employee benefit tax, that's, that's part of the property tax levy. I know. So, so you're increase, again, you're going back to increasing the property tax levy. And again, when you're talking about people in apartment buildings, you know, and that is getting passed on, when I look at these, that's why I think those are the most regressive, because it's hitting those people the hardest. And so that's why, to me, it makes the most sense to try and go with that local option sales tax and try and keep that property tax down.
I guess, I'm sorry, Thomas, one second, let me just like address that. Because I really think the people of this community will be more than happy to make sure that our employee have health insurance, the people who serve them, they have health insurance. 10 cents last year, we reduced the 10 cents for the, for the employee benefit levy, but we reduce also for the dead service levy. If we kept it by reducing only the dead service levy and we left that alone, we're still decreasing the tax. And I guess think that even if we increase it this year 10 cents, this is not, is, when I, I calculated, I don't remember how I did, but to look to my bill that I'm going to pay, it doesn't make difference. It's not, it's not like big difference. Even you are not going to notice it when you see your, your, like when you're paying your tax for your property tax. It is really a fraction of your bill. And since we reduce it, and if the people of this community knowing that we reduce it, but we don't, we have many peoples without health insurance, people who serve them every single day during winter time, you know, people, the seasonal employee, the all those, I don't mean the seasonal, I mean like the, the people that we're going to convert them now to full-time. them now to full-time, because they are hard-working people, they need to have insurance, and that's where it come from.
I agree with everyone on the lost. You know, we, as was noted, the, we're the only metro area in the state of Iowa that doesn't have one. And the scale of the, the revenue it generates is, I think, so critical. But we, as also was noted, it's, it, we may not have that available to us right away. So I would say some of these other taxes, we, we may need to consider. I think user fees could be a potentially valuable one. And again, they can help sort of make a connection between some of the things we'd use the revenues for, as Jeff noted in his memo, that, for example, parking fees could help us meet carbon reduction goals in the transportation sector, so you can make a direct connection. The same with the emergency levy. So I think we may, you know, I'd rather not press these others, you know, I'd rather use the lost, but I think in the, in the interim, we may, depending on our need, find we may need to tap into some of these others.
Okay, so I'll toss in two cents' worth here, or maybe $2 million worth, I don't know. I, I have long felt that we need to seriously consider promoting the use of lost local option sales tax in order to fund things that we've not been able to fund with our ordinary sources of revenue. Repairing our aged streets is one prime example of that, but there are others. So we will have to engage in a pretty thoughtful conversation about what would, where the money would go that we generate through the use of lost, assuming it's passed by the public and so on. But I think we need to look carefully at that. I think we also need a large source of funding to help owners of aged buildings repair and renovate their buildings to reduce the use of natural gas, that's a climate action thing, which also would enable them to reduce utility costs. Now, I don't know, that the landlord-tenant thing is a complication to this, because reduced utility costs are not necessarily passed along to the renter. Sometimes they are, because the renter pays directly, and other times they're not. So we'd have to sort that out. But I think that's a really good opportunity to achieve two big goals simultaneously. And we could also plant some trees appropriately, which would shade homes, or, you know, yeah, homes and, and other buildings, and thereby enable the cooling of buildings in summertime, or, in some cases, depending on the trees, help reduce the amount of natural gas used to heat them in the winter. So I think maybe the emergency levy and/or the utility tax, and maybe lost could be part of that. I'm not sure, with other people know financial stuff way better than I do, but some combination. Okay, that's the end of question five. Anybody else want to say anything else on this pretty big, complicated topic?
One, one quick comment, Jim, that we didn't talk about, is the use of fees. One fabulous fee that we did, it's probably my favorite fee I've ever paid, is the two bucks that we all paid for our waste receptacles. I think that was a great use, an illustration of this past year or so, every resident in the city of Iowa City had to pay $2, and as a result of that, got our various new recycling bins, garbage bins, and those sorts of things. It's a classic illustration of everyone chipping in just a little and servicing the entire community. So I think the fees, the staff is very creative in the use of fees as well.
Okay, Jeff, I think you got some pretty good feedback.
Yep, thank you.
Be helpful for staff. Okay, we can turn to the next topic, which is clarification of agenda items. And I would like to suggest this, we have a long list of important and very complicated topics to discuss in the remainder of our work session, so I want to suggest that we reserve our discussion of agenda items to the formal meeting, unless it's really important for some particular topic. Otherwise, we can deal with the questions during our formal meeting.
I really have one, and I... I guess this is on the, like, housing trust fund contribution.
Five D.
Yeah, where is the, we have a memo, right?
It's in the consent calendar, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, for, on the memo, they have five, like, five, I guess, five, A, B, C, D, that, the thing that they want to see on the report every year. Did you see this? Like, let me guess, the trust fund will use the fund for affordable housing project at follow, A, B, C, D. I just really need to add another item, like, number five. Here on, on number D, look at number D, there is one, two, three, four, the thing that we want to see on the report.
For those tracking, you're looking at the memorandum of understanding, it's an attachment to the staff report after the resolution?
The quarterly report must be provided to the city neighborhood service coordinator beginning January 1st, 2020.
Yes.
That's number D.
Yes.
Do you see, there is four of them, one addressing developer, two is amount of, I guess want to add another one, which is to tell us the initial rent of the unit, that they being, like, doing, like, say, if it's, so we can just know how much of our money has reduced, you know, rent for the, the 30% of the area median income or for the, you know, for the rest of them. Just, I get that's, that's, you know, figures already, they have it, I just wanted to add it to the report, and so we can see, like, the city money, how much, say, if they said one bedroom for the city, we provide like five bedroom, two of them at the city area median income, 30% of the area median income, and we're renting it for 500, and if we know that the market price is, say, 700, we will say, oh, our money even reduce, you know, just by this amount, so...
Maz, if you don't mind, I, I think this sounds more like a substantive question of, about amending something that's on our agenda, and we could pull that item from the agenda and discuss it.
However you want it.
Because here, what, what we need to do is ask questions and get responses to questions.
Okay, then, can you pull it out from the consent, you know?
What is it, five, what is it?
Five D.
Okay, can we move on then to our information packet discussion, which would be the August 8th packet? Anything on that?
I just want to thank Angie Jordan for the nice thank you letter she sent for, to police department, fire department, and others for their support and attendance at the National Night Out.
And item two, I'd like to thank the police and fire department for the report on the fireworks over the fireworks season. It, it was great to see that the number of calls did go down from last year, so that was good.
Anything, anything else in that packet?
IP three, I just encourage the public to review the update on the Iowa City Public Art Strategic Plan. I encourage them to review that. I think that that's, you know, we've had a lot of discussions about public art, and it's nice to see some of those discussions be made in the form of the actual plans. I encourage them to read that, that's IP three.
Okay, can we move to the August 15th packet? So with regard to that, maybe we could go to IP number four, which is, has to do with the memo from Jeff about our, an hourly position analysis. Jeff, you want to walk us through that, or Karen, or I don't know?
Well, I think, we, we've been through this, oh, a few months ago with the two positions in the communications division, so I won't go through all the, all the analysis that we did. You can see Ashley and Karen's memo that, that follows my, my cover memo. It's 15, 16 pages long and details the, the type of analysis that, that went into this. What my memo does is it, it copies the summary table from their report and shows you the, the estimated cost for the conversion. Now, that's a maximum cost, that assumes, we're, we're kind of assuming the, the worst-case scenario. By worst-case, I, I just mean the most costly scenario, which is the employees would select the family insurance, which is most costly to the city. We subsidize that at a higher rate, or the, or the, the, the cost of the subsidy is higher than if you were to choose a single or no insurance. So those cost figures are there. It, it comes out to the equivalent of about 17 and a half positions, when you look at that $865,000. My recommendation is that you keep these hourly and that you focus resources on supplementing staff where we're seeing the most needs from a service standpoint. I understand the desire to, to move these to benefited positions, and I really appreciate where that's coming from, and I know our employees appreciate that. I just see those service needs out there, and I worry about using these funds to, to achieve that goal, but then kind of handcuffing ourselves to be able to expand services, not only in this budget year, but in coming budget years as well, as we make our way through the, the final years of tax reform. I understand the council, you may want to proceed. I gave you, at the very end of my memo, a, a few positions that I think would provide the most benefit to, to the, to the public by moving them to a permanent status. And I also clarified that there are a, a couple of hourly positions that have never been filled. These were new hourly positions that were introduced in this year's budget. That is the human resource office assistant and GIS technician. Those have never been filled because of this ongoing discussion, and I would recommend that you just leave those vacant, as, as opposed to making them permanent. Because if I, if I was to come to you with two positions, two, two new permanent positions, they wouldn't be those two positions. They were, I was fine forwarding them on to you as hourly positions, but not permanent. So at a minimum, I'd suggest that you, you just eliminate those two positions, which, again, have never been filled. We're happy to go through the detailed analysis, but given the time and, and your familiarity with that, from going through it a few months ago, we'll, we'll hold off.
I'd like to ask a clarifying question, that maybe is best addressed to Ashley and Karen Jennings. You had a memo in the packet as well, that was attached to Jeff's. If I understood correctly, it indicates that the nine positions are currently staffed by 39 temporary employees. So am I right in thinking that roughly 30 temporary employees would lose their jobs? Not necessarily for an individual, but I'm just meaning numbers.
It's not a direct correlation. So for each position analysis, so we went from 39 individuals within nine positions, and so just based on the needs for those positions, some departments had selected to keep them at two part-time positions, so they wouldn't all convert to a full-time position. Others, there's a mix of full-time and part-time, a range, in some cases, of part-time employees, some staying 20 hours, some going up to 25 hours, just based on whatever the best-case scenario for department needs would be if we were to convert these to a higher level of responsibility, higher skill level, or, or no significant changes at all. Each, each position was analyzed by its own merit, so we talked with APSME about which position should be considered. We talked with the departments about what their operational needs were, and so we took the status quo positions, which could stay the same, or they could be altered in some way if they were to be converted to permanent. So I think there's only a couple of positions that would be converted to a full-time position from part-time.
But to clarify Jim's question, because I had the same impression that I think you had, Jim, with, based on your question, is, when I read this memo, it said because of our union contract, if these are going to become permanent, whether they're part-time or full-time, if they're going to become permanent, they come under the union. And all the people that are currently holding these positions would have to be terminated. Yes. And they would have to apply for that new position, whether it was still halftime or .63 or converted to full.
Correct.
And there is the possibility that with the number of these positions, you would be looking at increasing the requirements and the responsibilities, like I noticed in one or two bilingual preferred, that sort of thing. So from a procedural standpoint, we would have, I counted 36, because I saw three empty, but whatever, in the high 30s, we would have that many people, 36, 39, whatever, who would get a termination notice, correct?
Essentially, yes.
Yes. And there would be these new positions with new job descriptions and, and hours of whether they're halftime, full-time, whatever, and the requirements for that position and the duties for that position, and they could, if they wanted to, apply for that new position. And so we would have some, I'm assuming, who would get rehired into new positions, and we would have some who would not, because other people of different or higher skill levels would beat them out for those positions.
Or the, or the position, you know, the hours requirements may be different. But I want to clarify this, the termination notice. I think how we would proceed would be that we would post, we would keep the hourly positions and then post the permanent position. So they, it's, we don't terminate first and have nobody working.
Right.
We post first, and then if they don't get the job...
Then they're terminated.
Job is eliminated, and they get terminated at the end. To clarify, I think the best example to use is the, is the Parks and Rec customer service, because there's the, the most folks holding that position, and the number fluctuates, but when we did this report, there were 25 employees filling that role for us. As we go forward with a permanent structure, if you were to approve that, we would have four full-time employees and six halftime employees. So you go from 25 employees to 10 employees. That means 15 of them would no longer have a role with us. And it could be more than 15, because we would post it, and there could be, could be others to, externally or either, or internally, that would have more qualifications perhaps than some of those existing employees. But, you know, again, some of those 25, they may not want full-time employment, so they may not choose, they may choose not to apply for those, because they like the 20 hours or they like the 10 hours, whatever they may be working.
Well, when I look at this, I've got a number of concerns. I, I certainly understand the issue of wanting to, where we can provide benefits to employees, but I think it's, I think it's pretty typical with large organizations, that you use a mix of full-time permanent staff and hourly staff. And I, my sense is that in many ways, we've struck a pretty reasonable balance with this. I have a concern of people, you know, potentially more than just a handful of people losing their jobs because of this change, and these people may be very happy with the kind of schedule that they have now, and if they, if they aren't, well, they can look, you know, hopefully they're looking for something maybe that, that suits them better. I'm concerned about kind of the opportunity cost of where, where do we put our money in terms of the kinds of personnel resources we need to, to give the best service to the members of this community? And I think as, as Jeff has made clear from his perspective, and I think he's probably got the best perspective in terms of analyzing the whole thing, is making, doing these conversions is not, is not going to give us a whole lot more in terms of the service to the community. So spending potentially up to $800-plus thousand in doing this versus being able to use that money for other new hires, I don't think gives the members of our community kind of the best bang for their buck. So, and I'm really concerned about people losing their jobs as well. So, and I'm really concerned about people losing their jobs as well.
What do the rest of you think?
I really think our goal as a council was in the intention to fire nobody. And I respect what Jeff's saying by advertising new things, having new skill, but don't forget all those people, they've been working there for a long time, they have the experience, and they are well-qualified to do that. You're better than bringing somebody new who never had experience. That's number one. Number two, I would love to hear AFSMI, what your input on this, if you don't mind, Mr. Meyer? If they can, yes, tell us their input on this, because I want to hear from them.
I think it would be okay, as long as nobody else objects. I would note, though, before we actually invite somebody to come up, that the memos we received document ways in which staff interacted with AFSMI to come up with the data and information that it has.
I understand, but I want to hear it from them again, if you don't mind.
Who's in the best position to speak?
Chris or Terry?
Chris?
Chris, Terry?
Terry?
We went through, during the process, we went through a lot of, excuse me, jobs. We looked at how converting would disrupt operations. We looked at how many people were doing the job. We found that some people were only working two and three hours a week. We thought, is that really bang for your buck? There's a phrase. I also want to point out, in 2007, we had ninety hourly employees. 2017, we have over three hundred. Something needs to be done, and we need to look at jobs. We need to look at what people are doing and how it's contributing, and whether that job could be permanent, whether it should be hourly. But we don't need this many hourly, that many permanent. We need to look at a balance. I think this article, this, what we started, it's a good start. I would like to see all the jobs become permanent. I don't, it's a budget thing, I know that, I understand that. But I think city staff did work really hard on looking at these jobs. Is it perfect? No. Is it what I would like to see? No. I would like to see a commitment from the city to reduce the number of hourly jobs and create more permanent jobs. That's what a union wants, and that's my viewpoint. But in terms of getting together and working together, I think we had a start, and that's more than we had a year ago.
So the initial start would be these nine positions, like the unions behind that?
Oh, yeah.
And is those position, most of those positions worked twenty hours or more, or, as you said, there is some people work only three hours?
The positions, if they were permanent, would be more than twenty hours.
Okay.
Twenty or more. And then, you know, it may not be convenient for the person who's in that job, and you're right about that. But you may have somebody who only had twelve hours because there were other people doing the job, and now you have somebody who can do twenty hours. So, I mean, it's a balance, and it's not perfect, and a lot of stuff with employment is not perfect. I mean, they worked hard on it, we worked hard on it. It was not easy to go down a list of people, and you see that there's thirty-five people doing four jobs. But if you looked at the numbers and you looked at all of the factors that came into it, and to figure out that you might get fifteen jobs out of that job, permanent jobs with benefits and retirement and IFRS and things like that, that are all good things, and good things that draw people into the city, to work for the city, I think it was a good start. It's not perfect.
Terry, could you recite that number again? How many full-time, or how many hourly employees did the city have in 2007?
Ninety.
And how do we, how many do we have now?
Three hundred. Close to three hundred.
I'd like to, I'd like to.
But we don't have seasonal, I mean, the contract was different then, and I'll clarify that, too. We had seasonal employees, and we had other kinds of classifications in the contract for employees. So that, that's different, but it still has expanded. And it, you know, every division comes in and wants staff, and they ask for it at budget time. They don't necessarily get it. They're kind of forced to make an hourly job if they need the people. And that's something that, that's bigger than a union, that's on their heads. And I can sit and say, yep, I could sit there and sit back and say, yep, they're not doing that, but I understand the process, and I do respect that they did work hard on this. So it's a start. It's not perfect. It's not a hundred percent what we should have, but I think it's a start.
Thanks, Terry.
Thank you.
So my two cents on this is, it's my understanding.
I'm sorry, I just want to continue. I just was trying to bring her, and yes, sorry. I just want to continue, and you can take over. Yeah. So, like, just by listening to her now, there is few people, maybe they will lose their job, as I said, and those people are working three hours or something like that. I don't think they are depending on health insurance in a work that less than twenty hours. Of course, they have another job somewhere, maybe, I don't know, but like, nobody work like less than twenty hours somewhere and expected to have like health insurance from that job. And the city has been, those people, the thirty-nine people, has been working for years without, like, getting health insurance. Thirty-nine people was working for a year without living wage for the city. Is that what the city want? Is that what the council want to continue doing? And we are supposed to set the, you know, the standard and the bar high. And I really think AFSMI made it clear, and this is their recommendations, and that's what I really, as a city council, want to see. The people who work with the city, they have health insurance, and I know that the number eight-six-five, eight-hundred-and-sixty-five is really like frightening number, but as I said earlier, four-hundred-and-eighty-three from this is from the tax levy, and, you know, coming from the, my understanding, what it come from, the general fund will be three-hundred-and-seventy-four, which is, will be for the salary. And I think if we done this step, we are moving the city forward, and we are really committing to our community that the people who work for the city, they get what they need. We, yes, setting the standard high. That's what I think.
We're almost out of time here for the work session. We have, at the most, like, seven or eight minutes to go, probably.
I just want to quickly clarify something and thank Terry for using the terminology "permanent," because all along, I've been very confused by the number of classifications. You've got hourly, temporarily, seasonal, full-time, part-time, permanent. And so we're not talking, putting, making these people all full-time.
Yes, permanent.
No, the discussion is temporary versus permanent.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Did I say full-time?
You said full-time.
I mean, permanent, part-time, permanent.
Because I, and I'd like to see that practice stopped of having all those different categories as soon as we can, because if it was done to avoid paying benefits, including healthcare, just imagine that, two-hundred positions, two-hundred-and-ten positions over the last ten years, that could have gone a lot towards some very significant salaries.
Those numbers aren't accurate.
Oh, they're not?
And we can report back to you on those.
It still seems like a lot of money to be saved with calling them that, and, as well as the orientation of these people. Like, they're coming and going, you know, through a revolving door constantly. The cost alone, orienting, is a phenomenal amount. So I think the conversion needs to be done, and I appreciate AFSMI's input into this and hope they'll continue to monitor this. And if they were agreeable, I'd be in favor of continuing some of them now and, over time, converting the ones that would fit in there.
Sure.
Should we wait, Jim, until after the meeting?
Well, we still have six minutes. We can go.
Okay.
I'll express a view here. As I indicated at the start of our discussion about the prior topic, I don't support spending this amount of money for converting this number of employees from hourly to permanent employee status. Which is not to say I don't support our unions, because what I've advocated initially was that we hire new people to fill important jobs that were, we discussed in our discussion right before this. But also, I see good reasons to hire, to convert some of these positions. I just don't think it's financially wise to convert all of them. So I know that Jeff's memo recommends, in non-rank order, as you put it, Jeff, the animal center clerk, the engineering clerical assistant, the senior center clerical assistant, and then you also go into the rec customer service attendants. I'm not sure how many of them there are. And the total cost of that would be four-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand dollars, if I read correctly. So I'm supportive of converting some of the nine positions, not all of them.
I kind of take an incremental approach to this, in a way similar to how we manage the hourly, you know, moving toward fifteen incrementally. Yeah, I tend to, first of all, I think it's very difficult to sort of pull out one particular issue related to our budget and come to any kind of clarity as to what seems appropriate when we, you know, this is part of a much larger discussion. I think it's very hard to assess what to do on any particular thing without having an understanding of the big picture. But I do support incrementally working toward the transition over a period of time with trying to identify those positions where there'd be the most benefit. I also would just want to quickly add that this is a very complicated issue. You know, I mean, this whole question of the organizational and employment structure with temporaries and permanents, I've spoken before and in fact referenced when we talked about the minimum wage. I think, for me, it's very important to understand what, identifying cities that we feel are of comparable complexity and have comparable values as cities, to have an understanding of how they structure their workforce. And just as a point of information, I mean, we may not agree, but it would be useful for me to have an understanding of that. My quickly, you know, in the days before this meeting, looked into that with respect to Bloomington, Indiana, and Madison. Some of their temporaries have worker, work benefits, such as transit passes, healthcare coming out of their wage, sick leave, holiday pay, retirement, overtime. So there are a number of things that can be negotiated as benefits without changing the status from hourly or seasonal to permanent. And that wasn't part of our conversation, so.
That's, we are prohibited from doing that through our collective bargaining agreement with AFSMI. They would have to agree to remove that provision and allow us to provide benefits to those temporary employees, and that's probably not likely to happen.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else want to address this topic?
I think for me, the big picture is, is this did not come out of, you know, just thin air. It was about ten years ago that a management consultant, my understanding, was hired with the process and the goal of reducing full-time employees for the city of Iowa City, is my understanding, and that as a result of that process, a number of full-time positions were converted to hourly positions to save money on behalf of the city. And I think in terms of service to the taxpayer, I think it has done damage to the city in the sense that those hourly employees are very talented, so I don't want to impugn them. But because they're not paid very much, and because they don't have a stake, there's a lot more turnover. Some are long-term, but because we don't have those benefits, I think customer service, for example, that is a very complicated position, I think. I don't think it's simple, where you're interfacing with the public in the rec centers. And I think if we had more full-time people there, I think we would see a lot more stability of service. I think that's important. So for me, the big picture is, is that I think we want to at least communicate to the staff what the council's values are in terms of negotiating with AFSMI, that the position of the city of Iowa City is that we want to unwind the steps that were taken ten years ago and move in the opposite direction to restore a lot of those positions incrementally, over time, consistent with the budget. Hopefully that, if we can instruct staff that that is our bargaining position on a year-in and year-out basis, reviewing the budget with AFSMI, that they will come up with a set of recommendations on an ongoing basis to make sure that we have more and more full-time and less and less hourly.
That's a big topic, seems to me, completely reasonable to suggest it. Big topic, though.
I'm just not remembering the history that way at all, so I think we need to get that clear.
Okay.
Okay, speaking of clarity, we probably should take a break now. We haven't fully resolved this. I think we're going to have to come back to it after the break for the formal meeting. So we'll reconvene at seven, and then after the formal meeting, visit the rest of our work session agenda. All right, and we're back in the work session. I need to take, you know, a couple-minute break, but we could get started anyhow. Oh, let's see, we had.
The work session.
Come pretty close to finishing our discussion about the hourly position analysis, which was item IP four, or whatever, in the August fifteenth packet. So, let me get back.
Are we going to finish that?
I was going to say, Jim, can we just defer till next time?
Yes.
You know, if you all want to defer, we can, yeah.
Because I guess last time you said, you know, this is need like more time, and it will take our time, we can have it.
Yeah, I mean, if it's not a problem with staff. Okay, so we'll.
Not a time-sensitive issue for us.
We'll pick up on the hourly position analysis during our next work session.
Hopefully, we don't have a lot think like this.
Okay, and then, so I got to find out where we are here. So the next item is IP five and IP six, which has to do with Forest View Development. And I think you all know that we've received a letter from the, now two co-presidents of, by way of Rafael Morataya. We've received a letter from the two co-presidents of the Forest View Tenants Association, and they asked for a deferral of our discussion. They also have asked that they be able to meet with Jeff, I think I'm getting this right, Jeff, to meet with Jeff and two council members? Is that right? I mean, there are a couple, I think I'm conflating a couple of things, but.
Mm-hmm.
No, you're correct.
That's true.
Yeah, so I'd be happy to meet, but I think it's really up to the council, I mean, another council person, but I think it's really up to the council to figure out who should attend, but.
I just, I have a.
Who's that, or what?
I have a question with dividing up and only one or two council members getting this kind of information. To me, it should, to me, what they want to say should come to the whole council, so we can kind of all hear the same thing and be part of that discussion, if there's a discussion, and, you know, where we head. I have a problem with an issue that this, this big and this important, that just a couple of council members are meeting with them.
Yeah, I think Maz knows more about what I'm going to mention here, but I think there's some challenges that the association is trying to process right now. I understand that they had a lengthy meeting on Sunday at Forest View, and I understand a lot of people were present, and there was a lot of conversation, and you were present, so, you know, and I know this indirectly. So I think it's not so much, I mean, their concern is to how to proceed, I think. But Jeff, I know you've had some conversations, no?
Is the concern that staff will be there and two counselors? Because they can meet with two counselors at a request, and.
Yes, that's what I.
The counselors could go.
Tell me if I'm wrong, I think Rafael asked if it's possible for, to meet with staff and.
I think the bigger question is, do you want a subset of council to be negotiating economic development or financial incentive deals? That would be very non-traditional. We would typically, we would typically either have staff advance those, or we would advance them through your economic development committee and vet them that way. I've never been a part of a situation where you have a subset of council and staff negotiating a deal like this.
If that's what they're looking for, negotiating a deal, then I.
No, I don't think that's what they want.
I don't think it is either, but I don't think.
I don't think, you don't understand, right, maybe, but I was, they just need like, they don't want to say we want to meet with three, four, four council member, which is going to make quorum. Yeah, but they would like to lay some option and discuss it with maybe the staff and the developer and the council, and see if that could be possible, but before they can present it. You know, sometimes you like, you're going to think about something that maybe is really, you cannot do it, by the law, you cannot do it. So they need somebody to be there. I don't think they want to discuss a deal or anything. And everybody received a letter here, right? I think, and that's what it is, but it's not like negotiating the deal where we like the development deals with, yes, you and two council. No, no. And don't think that the developer will be there, I guess, that's what they requesting, and it could be any council, whoever want to, you know, and it's not like, and you're going to report back to us.
Is it possible, if there's no decision to be made?
No, no decision.
Just let me finish. If there's no decision to be made, we realize that no counselor, less than Quorum, has any authority whatsoever. They understand that. And assuming that there's no decision made at the meeting. And assuming that there's no decision made at the meeting, you know, maybe whether it be directly with Jeff or not, but we could do some two-on-ones where we're just getting information, we're not telling, we're not communicating, we're not deciding, just getting information. I would be supportive of that. Obviously, we cannot make any decision.
No, you cannot, yeah.
Hold on, go ahead, Al.
I mean, if, if the goal is to gather information and find out what is and is not a possibility, I mean, staff can provide that, that.
But if somebody requesting a council member to be attending, we cannot just say, you know, if there is some council willing to attend and they are not quorum, they only two people, and they, they are not going to make a decision, they will report to us with, and if they ask them anything, they will come here and we ask them what, if we need any information. But why not? Any resident can request a council member to be like attending as long as it's not a quorum and they are not making the decision for the whole council.
I guess I must have, I apologize, I must have missed the memo. I saw the email that requested the developers and city staff and, but I didn't see the part about requesting counsel, and I talked to Robin, and Robin hadn't mentioned having a council member. I mean, the full intent of the decision not really is a makeup of who's going to be there, but, but wanting us to table a discussion so that they have time to develop or have, that addresses everybody's concerns, because apparently we had concerns about this development, the size of the, of the modulars, and apparently a number of the residents did also, and they just want a little bit extra, like, planning time and some conversations. But I don't think we necessarily have to insist a council member be there, but if city staff is there, I think that was the prime thing. They really wanted to be sure that somebody from the city was there.
I just think it's up to a council member, they requesting, and if there is council member want to attend, we can, if I say I want to attend, I can attend, yeah, it is a public thing. I'm not, I'm not going on behalf of you.
Right.
Or I'm not making decision. That's why I think this is completely up to the council if they want to attend or not.
Yeah, I, I agree. I mean, of course, it's completely up to the council. I think what, what we're trying to do is just identify what the purpose of it is. I think it's an awkward position for staff to be in at times, to be there with two council members, not knowing what the position of the council is. It's a very, you know, I'm not sure if the council members are just supposed to be listening rather than giving their own personal opinion or what, what the function of the, what, what the result, intended result is. Because in terms of providing information, we're certainly, we have done that on numerous occasions and can continue to do that.
For example, if like I went to a community event and somebody asked me my personal opinion and somebody was, they are like Jeff, I, I can say my personal opinion as long as I'm not saying this is the council opinion. And still, if they being there with, with the problem, they being there with the staff and they saying their personal opinion, is that a problem, by the law?
I think it's not a, a good situation, but again, it's the council's decision.
No, you know, good situation, that's from your point of view. I, now you are the legal advisor here, telling me, is that's legal or illegal? Are we going to be holding accountable because we done this? Or this is legally, it's okay?
It is legal for you to meet, and I have said it is your decision. I don't think it's an advisable decision to make.
Like according to what, like, is there a law supporting that or you, that's your opinion?
I give lots of opinions that are based on what I think ultimately will be the, the good outcome that will serve the council.
My concern is, my concern in having council members go to this is the, the expectation of individuals there, of getting input from, advice from, recommendations from council members, that then one they may either rely on and other council members aren't in agreement, and/or then we end up with certain council members that have one set of information and other councils don't have that same set of information in terms of making final decisions. I think, I, I'm not quite sure how you go into a meeting like this, that there isn't some kind of, at least informal negotiation and discussion about how to resolve the problems. And I think that at this stage is best left to staff and, and the residents and the developer, and then that's brought back to all of us as an entire body to look at and discuss. Otherwise, I think if people, if, if counselors do choose to go, I quite frankly think that you should go and not say a word and simply listen. I really don't think you should have any, and I think it seems rude, but I, I really think that's what should happen, because otherwise I think there's a potential problem with that communication.
It seems there is a problem here, legally, there is no problem, but it is up to you guys.
Why don't we just have the residents, the developer and staff meet? And then if the individual residents, I mean, they can always approach us individually, right? I mean, for questions. And then we will get the staff memo, and then we can also approach staff individually with our own individual concerns and questions. So, if we want to, we can have that individual contact. I think that we could sort of have the best of both worlds, as far as I'm concerned, that we'll get the individual contact with the residents, staff will meet with, I think you're really worried that, you know, unconsciously we'll, we'll sort of put our thumb on the scales, one way or another, creating expectation of the council at large, even though we don't have that authority, the residents may perceive that we, that we do. So, I think that makes sense.
Yeah, I, I think there's a lot going on beneath the surface in ways that I don't want to talk about at the moment. And I think that it would be unwise of more than one of us to meet in this particular situat, kind of situation, not knowing precisely what the topic would be and what the expectations would be. I, I have had one-to-one conversations with various people who are involved in this, and I think that's completely appropriate, but I do that with just about everything. So, I, I, I think because I believe there's more going on beneath the surface that we need to have staff try to meet, well, meet with the, the tenants association and its new two co-presidents, and presumably with Rafael, presumably with Charlie, depends on who they want to have present, presum, and I don't understand why the developer's not involved in this particular request, but there you go. And, and that, I don't want to, I don't want to put this. I, I think that kind of meeting should take place. Oh, yeah, the other thing I'm thinking about is part of what's going on is there's, there are lots of challenges having to do with language and two different kinds of language, English and community, the, the difficulty of translating, but also the complexity of zoning codes and subdivision regulations and financial stuff. It's my understanding that it, that is tremendously complicated, especially when you're trying to translate it into another language for people who have no familiarity whatsoever with these kinds of things. So, I, I, I think maybe we're going to have to help sort that out, but I don't think the council should be directly involved in doing that out, doing that. Okay, so I think that means, what, you tell me if I'm wrong.
Yeah.
I agree.
So, what I'm understanding is that we should ask staff to respond and try to arrange something so the staff can meet with, with the tenants association and whoever else they want to have present. And, and see how that goes.
I think I would just mention it, to the Forest View Tenant Association, it does sound like they're trying to do a collaborative effort to inform council staff and maybe even to help navigate maybe some of their ideas. I, I do agree with the perception of counselors being there. I don't know that we, of course, we are directing staff at this point to reach out to them and be a part of that. I don't know that we have the ability as a council to restrict anyone, staff, or I'm sorry, a counselor, from showing up. So, but I do hear the concern, I, and I do encourage the Forest View residents to reach out to counselors. I think that is something that any resident, anybody can do. So, that's what I would encourage them to do in a collaborative effort to, one-on-one or two-on-two or whatever you want to do, to reach out to counselors. I, I would agree that just from a perception of, of council members being there, potentially could not be the best situation, given where the situation is at this point.
Okay, I think we have a clear set of guidance for the staff here coming from the council majority.
But if any council would like to show up, I guess still the staff cannot say, you know. We have to make that clear.
Actually, actually, we could. Actually, we could.
No.
It's a private meeting, it's not a public meeting.
No, if they invite us to this meeting, I guess it's up to the council, don't you agree?
If you come as a representative of the tenants association, yes. I don't think that would be wise, given your position on the council.
No, but I'm telling you again, unless you provide me a code saying that if some people of the community ask me to attend a meeting and I cannot, like, I cannot attend it, if the council said I cannot, but nobody said you cannot, they say it's up to the council, but they don't recommend it. But nothing that would prevent you.
I think we've talked before about the conflict of interest issues, and I don't think you should be involved.
No, you didn't say that. Give me a clear, something below saying that. Otherwise, I'm not going to listen to that, sorry.
That's fine.
Yeah.
That's fine.
But by the way, I'm saying that just in case of, because I have another thing that not prevent me from coming to those kind of meetings, because at least I have my boss will be there, I don't have, like, for me, it will be like awkward to be there. I'm not going, but I'm saying that you cannot prevent somebody else, you know, for I'm coming to the council just because of that. And I asked you three time, you said no, but it's not, I give you advice, it's not preferable to be there. But nobody says it is clear law preventing you from being there if I been asked by the community to come.
You are getting advice from the city attorney that
I'm sorry, sir.
Let me finish, please. And the advice is that you would be opening yourself up to a char, not a charge, whatever the word is, to an obvious conflict of interest. And if you're in that kind of situation, ordinarily, you're expected to recuse yourself from decisions involving this, the topic about which you have a conflict of interest. So, if you, if you do
Why? If I was present there, I did not say anything about the rest of the council decision or supporting anything or, yes, what's the problem here? How is the conflict of interest?
Well, I'll tell you how I think if there's a conflict
And, and, and don't talk about me. I'm, I'm saying, for example, is Bruce. You know, don't talk about me personally, because I have my own reason. But give me example, Bruce, for example, okay? Bruce is going to attend the meeting. What's the conflict of interest here?
I think the situation's different, but, but
I'm not talking about myself. I told you I have many reason not to attend that meeting, because that, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about you cannot tell council what to do in this case. And I say, don't talk about me, I'm talking about council member. Bruce is attending the meeting. What is the conflict of interest?
Does the rest of the council want me to continue to advise council member Salih?
What? I'm asking, I have a question.
Of course.
Explain her conflict.
No, I do not think it would be a conflict of interest if, if council member Teague attended.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. By the way, I wasn't intend to attend the meeting, not because of what you're telling me, because you never told me that, and you know, about like, don't go to this specific meeting. I was not going because I have my manager there, you know, and I'm, I cannot, like, two of us cannot be in the same place because I have something else. But that, if not that, I wasn't know that there is conflict with this, because you did not say that on the beginning, you know, while we were talking, and we were talking, you were saying general, the council member, you don't advise them to go. You are not saying, you cannot go. Next time, please be clear. Thank you.
You know, I think, given the time and given the situation, we should not try to do the last three items unless it's absolutely necessary that we do that.
Let's defer.
One quick thing, sorry. It was an item in the correspondence that I, I had talked to Eleanor about, and I think maybe some of the other counselors had questions about it, that the bike lanes and all kinds of legal statutes were stated, and we were violating all these rules and regulations. And I just quickly asked Eleanor, and she sent me just a very brief statement that'll probably only take her 90 seconds to reiterate, because I just wanted to relieve some concerns that I had, that, that are we violating these rules about these bike lanes? Is that okay? Just quick. Sorry.
This is, I think the correspondence that Pauline's referring to is, was the one from David Dixon on Clinton Street. And what I told Pauline was that the answer to the liability question that he raised in that communication was that the city has immunity when faced with the claim that negligent design of a street caused injury or damage, if the city can demonstrate that the reconstruction was done, quote, "in accordance with a generally recognized engineering or safety standard criteria or design theory in existence at the time of the reconstruction." Staff understands that standard, they've understood it for years. While I cannot address the specific design elements that were present on Clinton Street, it's my understanding that the Clinton Street plans were, were done by an engineer and those plans were stamped.
Thank you, Eleanor.
Okay, so without objection, we're going to defer discussion of these last three items to our next meeting.
I'll move to adjourn.
Well, you don't have to move, so, you don't have to move to adjourn, so we are adjourned.
The work session.